... Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I appreciate that. As Chairman of the Harvard Board of Education, I hereby call this March 20th meeting to order. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board, the Superintendent, and I are pleased that you are here to join us to celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operation of the Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. The Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personal appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems for individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. They are not... They are the time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments will... From the audience will be confined to the time designated for a public address to the Board. Decorum and courtesy are important elements in any effective public meeting. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that these proceedings be accurately recorded, I may ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you've taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of our school system. We thank you for your interest in Hartford Public Schools. Now, Mr. Flores will read this in Spanish.
Buenas noches. El presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado orden en esta reunión ordinaria de la junta del 20 de marzo de 2018. Damos una calidad bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La junta y las superintendentes se complacen que se han unido a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información, tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria, y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford, estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la Superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos, y nombramientos de personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la Superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se le darán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos celulares o dígptos positivos de comunicación, y absténganse de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestra capacidad de grabación. Los complace que se haya tomado el tiempo esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar, y le damos gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Thank you so much. So, we're gonna do the dialogue session. Parent and student comment, Mrs. Sullivans.
We, as the Board, in collaboration with the Superintendent and district leadership, are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of HPS. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's Board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously, and to that end, we will have staff available for immediate follow-up if follow-up is required. After you have finished speaking, a staff member will come up to you, ready to take your information down. They will follow up with an update within 48 hours. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, Ms. Santiago will ring the bell and letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now, Mr. Julio Flores will read this in Spanish.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la Superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford, y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente, y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. Tenemos personal disponible para seguimiento inmediato para los casos que lo requieren. Una vez que usted haya terminado de hablar, un miembro del personal estará disponible para tomar su información. Esa persona investigará su caso y se comunicará con usted dentro de 48 horas. Les recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando hayan pasado dos minutos, la señorita Santiago sonará el timbre dejándole saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, denúne sus comentarios.
Thank you. First, we have James Mulholland.
Hello. My name is James Mulholland, and I'm a teacher here at School of Medical Sciences Academy, and I'm in my 29th year of teaching here in the city. Sure. And I'm here to express my support and briefly speak for the resolution regarding naming the auditorium at Parkville after my father, David Mulholland. My father started teaching in the city in 1959. He was a gifted and talented teacher, and he went on to become a vice principal in the city, and he was the first principal at Parkville, and he was there for 21 years. He was a big supporter of not just the schools in the city, but also the city of Hartford, and he often spoke about how much he loved being an educator in the city. He often bragged about how many different languages were spoken at Parkville, and that you can still see that in the flags that go around the school. I was in middle school at the time that the city was being... Considering building a new school, and I know he really sort of agitated the Board of Education into convincing them to build the school by calling reporters from the Hartford Current Inn and giving them free tours to show them just how much they needed a new school. As I said, I was in middle school, and I can remember him coming home and talking about his plans for the building and how excited he was that there was going to be a skylight in the art room. And his favorite part of the building was the auditorium. He used to love the performances put on by the kids, and he could not compliment his teachers enough for the efforts they put in to putting on plays and different shows. So, I just want to say that for me and my family, it would be a great honor to have the auditorium named after him. He passed away about a year and a half ago, but I can still see him talking at the dinner table about how much he loved that school and he couldn't wait to get started working in the new school. So, I thank you very much.
Thank you. Bethany Sullivan?
Evening. Should I not use this? Is anyone... A little closer? Is that good? Hello? Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Torres Rodriguez and Board members. For new Board members who may not know me, my name is Bethany Sullivan, Principal at McDonough Middle School. I've worked in Hartford as an educator for 20 years and am a lifelong resident of Hartford with sons who currently attend Hartford Public Schools. I'm speaking tonight for two reasons. To thank Dr. Kay Carbone for her leadership in Hartford and to speak in favor of Iva Avila as our new Chief of Elementary and Middle Grades Education. Dr. Carbone came to Hartford Public Schools five years ago at the same time I was appointed Acting Principal at McDonough. She's been my supervisor, mentor, and thought partner during my entire tenure as principal. When I reflect on the professional growth my principal colleagues and I have made over the past five years, we attribute much of it to Dr. Carbone's leadership. She has very high expectations for her building-based leaders, always pushing our practice to the next level. This work has included the implementation of social-emotional learning in the whole-child framework, ensuring Tier One instruction is accessible to all students, using student data to schedule Tier Two intervention blocks in all K-8 schools, and building the capacity of principals to lead effective teams that engage in cycles of continuous improvement to ensure that professional learning has a direct impact on instructional practice and student outcomes. In addition to supporting us in both the adaptive and technical changes needed to transform our schools, Dr. Carbone has also been an emotional support to principals as we engage in this very challenging work. Despite warning us five years ago that she is not warm and fuzzy, she has been our rock. She has supported her principals through health issues, divorce, the death of parents, high levels of stress, and even the passing away of colleagues. Though she may be stingy with her hugs, she is beyond generous with her phone calls to make sure we are okay and to offer support. She does this because she believes in us and the work we're doing together. Dr. Carbone, please know that we appreciate you and all you have done to develop our leadership capacity and to support our schools. Your work over the past five years has had a significant impact on teaching and learning in Hartford Public Schools, and we wish you all the best on your next endeavor. Next, I would like to speak in favor of the appointment of Iva Avila as our new Chief of Elementary and Middle Grades Education. Ms. Avila has made a very notable impression in a short time. She's intelligent, focused, and not afraid to engage in difficult conversations to ensure that our schools are adequately supported and that the work of central office has a direct impact on student outcomes. Ms. Avila understands the complexities of turnaround work and is the best person to continue to move this work forward. I'm looking forward to collaborating with Ms. Avila and my colleagues to implement the district model of excellence. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucy Smith?
Good afternoon. My name is Lucy Smith, and I am a mother of four. And I just want to speak in behalf of... In regards to safety across the border. I'm sure everybody's aware of what's going around in our entire country. Our children's... Their lives are being lost with this gun violence. I understand there's... There's different opinions on that issue. And I don't have a problem with the guns. I have the problem with the humans behind the guns. I was informed not too long ago that a machete was brought into the school. I so believe that we have this safety system put in place for the governor... Government officials. If you work in a government office, you're protected. We can't go in there not even with a filing system because they'll make you throw it away. But when it comes to our children, I can go in there, might sign my name, and I can lie. But then I can walk through the entire school and do as I please. I, for myself, will not harm anyone, but who is to say the next person behind me will not do something to our kids? And I just want to be aware... I just want you to be aware that something must be done before something does happen. I don't want one of our schools in Hartford to be one of those statistics in the news. I want our children to be put first, and before education, safety must be in place. You have a good evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hiya, Cynthiane?
Okay. Good evening, Superintendent. Board member, as always, thank you for serving. Okay. I'm Hiya Cynthiane. A member of the SGC at Hartford High. And I'm here to talk about a few things this evening. And I want to piggyback on what that young lady said about safety. I do hope Hartford Public School have a safety plan for all our schools, okay? Because, as we say, we never know who is who and what people can do. We know what happened this morning. Again, another shooting in the school. So, I'm hoping that we all sitting down with our police department and try and figure out how we can make sure that all our schools are safe, all right? There's a lot of copycat going around, so we need to make sure we are aware of things going. Okay. I'm here first because I always come with something, and I want to let you know I want to thank Dr. Jose Rivas Colon very much. We've been working together about that swimming pool at Hartford High that's been out since last June or before June. What we had to be doing is busing our kids to the park to do their swimming lesson. Now, I have to say, thank God, we are working on the swimming pool and hopefully we'll get it done soon. That's really important for... So, I want to thank Dr. Rivas Colon. The other thing I want to talk about is the fact that I'm not sure if our schools already have a budget. I do not think so. And I would like to know what is the plan to make sure that we all have a budget? Is it going to be a child-based budget? Or it's going to be what are the needs at the schools? And I'm hoping that... I know we are not getting much of a federal dollars because this is Connecticut. This is a sanitary city, and we know what kind of government we have federally. So, as a state, we're going to have to make sure we work hard to have that funding for our education. So, it's really important for us to have something in place so we can start looking at as a GSC... As a SGC, you know, committee to see what it is that we... Our needs are. The other quick thing is I need to talk about is the fact that as a principal at the school, and I think this is for all schools in general. Superintendent, you give your principal the charge to go in and take... You know, be in charge of those schools. And when they come to you with a budget that their needs are, you need to seriously look at what their needs are and make sure that those needs are met because those schools are not going to function right if they don't have those needs met, all right? And I want to go back to the fact is that just like, okay, you have a house. You... I'm the outsider. I can't come in and tell you I want to paint your house green when you don't want it green. You give those principals the right to do what they think is right in those buildings. Of course, we need checks and balance, but it's really important for when we say we want a computer tech person, you don't send us a building manager because a building manager doesn't do it for us. We need a computer tech person, all right? So, I'm asking now that within our budget, that we either get a part-time computer tech person. We're looking at over 1,300 kids or 1,200 kids at Hartford High now. We got a lot of old computers there. We need somebody who can help us, you know, when they fall apart. We can have them... Put them back together so these two then can use them. It's really much important. So, I'm asking you to give your principal the autonomy to do the right thing and don't try to, you know, prevent them from doing what is right in so many different ways. When they come to you and say, "This is what I need", you see whether or not they can have it. Don't give them something that they don't need. We can look for grants to make sure we have that computer tech person in the building. It's really important to us, all right? The other thing I want to talk about is... Oh. By the way, before I... Before I wrap it up, I want to let you know. In January, we... My son's scholarship fund, we were able to give a young person from this school a $1,500 scholarship. And the plan is to make sure that every year that a kid from one of Hartford Public School get a $1,500 scholarship, especially the kids that going into stem cell. And I think that is really important for... To make sure that we have a strong science curriculum for our kids in the city, okay? It needs to happen, all right? We're dying because we don't have good science, all right? We need to make sure they're working, right? So, that is my... My thing tonight, and I just want to let you know. Thank you. You know, when we work together, we can get a whole lot done, all right? Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Santana?
Good evening. My name's Kelly Santana. And I would have introduced myself about two weeks ago as the Parkville PTO Treasurer, but unfortunately, after serving on the PTO for approximately well from the beginning of the school year until the 14th of the month, I got told at the... On the 14th of the month because I'm a grandmother and not a parent or a guardian of a child in Parkville, that I couldn't be on the PTO. So, my... I was told that. It was a big meeting. It was important. My thing in reference to this, to the Board, is I think you guys should first review that policy and if it can be changed to include parents, grandparents, and guardians. It should be written that way because you guys are missing out on a lot of great volunteers and people that have time and energy to give to the PTO. Case in point, myself. Second, I want you to express that I was devastated that day. I was... I was... Five minutes after the conversation, I was in tears, and I left that school in tears. And I stayed that way for like two days. I was really upset about it because... I felt like I had an opportunity to have my hands in my grandson's education in a way I didn't have my hands in my son's education. And I see the difference and the growth that having your hands in your child's education makes. So, unfortunately, I was a single parent, so I had to work, so I didn't have the time to do the right things by my own children's education. But because I did raise my children right, my son bought his first house when he was 25 and told me, "Quit your job, stay home, and help me raise my grandchildren." So, that was my job, is to help raise my grandchildren. And to do that now, I'm being told by the school I have to have guardianship of my grandchild to be part of the PTO, which I think is wrong. And I think it's unfair that the staff at the school, who have been trained in several different ways for the SGC and the PTO rules and regulations and how to get a PTO up and running properly, is at fault because they had... They knew from the first day that I was a grandmother and not a guardian and not a parent. And they elected me. The FRA at my grandson's elementary school said, "Okay, you're going to be the president, you're going to be the vice president, you're going to be the treasurer, and you're going to be the secretary." And the four of us, we were off and running. And I took that position very, very seriously for the last eight months and just to have it just like, oh, now that I started to learn some stuff and I started asking questions about Title I funding and how Title I funding is being spent and why you're doing literature nights four times a school year when only 11 parents showed up to the first one and three showed up at the last one, why you keep wasting money like that? It became a problem. And let's keep it real. There's 22 schools in Hartford that don't have SGCs or PTOs up and running properly, but they're all receiving Title I funds. And the way I understood for them to receive Title I funds, they're supposed to have parent participation. That's all I have. My feelings are really hurt. Between the Board and the school, we got to get together because like the lady before me said, we all work together, we can get some stuff done. But you guys are up here trying to do a great job with the new excellence plan and all that. If you don't have your staff member and your teachers and your principals also on board and not just in front of your face, but also behind your back, it's never going to work. We're going to stay on this hamster wheel for a very long time.
Thank you.
Y'all have a blessed evening.
Carrie Perry?
You said Kenny Perry, right?
I said Carrie because I thought I'd say Carrie, but Kenny. Okay. Thank you. Ours looks like the end.
All right. So, first of all, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Kenny Perry, and I'm here. Can anybody hear me? Okay. Yes. So, my name is Kenny Perry. I'm a proud parent of Capital Prep, two Capital Prep students, but I'm here today as a chairperson for the Safety and Security Team for the Hartford Parent Leadership Coalition. So, we have some recommendations. I want to read them to you, then I have a comment, okay? On October 24th, 2018, the HPLC, PTO, and SGC, parent members worked together and came up with some ideas that the body of coalition decided that would... That they would like to submit to Hartford Public Schools to review as a future safety and security recommendation. The following are some safety and security recommendations. One, an SPO be posted at the front door at all times. Two, anyone entering Hartford Public Schools must present a current photo ID to the SPO, or they will not be allowed in the building. Three, signs be posted outside the school building informing everyone entering the school of such policy. Four, all schools have both male and female SPOs. Five, perimeter searches be done on all school grounds by SPOs. And then the last is the facility-slash-school tours be done on an hourly basis throughout the school. We can have... We can forward these to the Board and the Superintendent. As the new person, I just want to say, we know that safety also has a lot to do with climate, and I hope that we have a further conversation about what that looks like from top down and bottom up. And that's including parents and students, but also administrative and staff. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Millie Archenegas?
I'm sorry. You're going to send that? Make sure we get copies of it? Okay. Thank you.
Millie Archenegas? Good evening, Superintendent, Honorable Board Members. My name is Millie Archenegas, and I am the Executive Director of the Hartford Parent University, and I'm also a resident... You got me? Of Hartford. I want to speak about a couple of things today. You know, I came today... I was actually writing my speech, and I was speechless. Because I've been doing this job for 18 years, and I come across parents at all different capacities. And when you have parents like Kelly and other parents that are really trying to put their best effort in ensuring that their children have the best education that they can have in their school, as soon as they start asking those tough questions, they put all these roadblocks for them. And then they have to navigate a dysfunctional system, a system that does not want to see them anymore. You're too empowered to be here. You're asking too many questions. So, what is this work for? I asked myself, "What is this work for?" We have to change this culture that we have in these schools. The district can only do so much because when they come down and they do their thing and they leave, it goes back to the same way it was. And that's what Kelly was referring to. When you're not there, that's what happens. And for parents to feel this way, where they're not wanted in the school, to feel like their opinion doesn't matter, we... We can't run a system like that. That wouldn't be a system. That would be a dysfunctional system. And I say this to everyone that works for our children. If you feel in any type of way... If you feel in any type of way that because we are a people of color, that you can treat us mediocre and deplorable, that stops today. Parents are going to take off their gloves and they're going to continue to report everything that they see, starting from the door. So be prepared on the other side for the complaints. Because we are going to change this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Downs.
Michael Downs, 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford. And I agree with the last speaker that anybody that has a connection with a child to school, a legitimate connection, grandparents, great-grandparents, some great-grandparents are raising great-grandchildren in this system, I've experienced it, then they should be allowed to be involved with the PTO system and the, and the organization of parents. I'd like to mention my support for the naming of the Parkville School for David Mulholland. I met his son, who I knew from when he first became a teacher, but I knew his father many years before that, from 1979 on. And he's a good man, very great man, good principal, good guy to work for. And he deserves to have this auditorium named after him. And I also had noticed the appointment of Ms. Avila as the Chief of Elementary and Middle Schools. And it's a good appointment, although I don't know her, I trust the superintendent's good, good judgment in appointing her. My only objection is the salary. I think it's a little too high. But then again, many of the salaries at Central Office are a little too high. And I just, as a citizen of the city of Hartford, I do raise that objection. Also Weaver, for, when they first closed Weaver, for years, my neighborhood was concerned about no shovels on the ground. Now we got shovels on the ground. In the past several years, we've had several amendments concerning Weaver. There was one about a month or two ago, the last one. My only objection, I see shovels on the ground, I see them working, but they're not working fast enough. So if the Chairman of the Board and Ms. Oliver as well could get their Weaver green together and get moving, get them moving faster. Also, I went to a parents' meeting about a month ago or so, or maybe a little less. And the thing that came out of that meeting was that they want all of the schools to have strict, a strict check at the door of everyone going into the building. That means at least, that may include as well, workers as well, but I recall something happening maybe 20 years ago or so, maybe a little less, after 9/11, where strict security at the doors was adhered to. Maybe we have to get back, I think we have to get back to that and stick with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Santiago.
Hello. My name is Catherine Santiago. I'm a mom of three. I have three kids in Hartford Public School. I come here today because I need help. I'm trying to put my kids in the best schools. The last meeting I came to, I heard a parent said she doesn't want to get a phone call, that her kid is in jail, right? Or that her kid is dead. I feel the same way. My kids ran through three, three public schools, well, three schools in Hartford District. And they're all three been failures. This year alone, they've been in two different schools. I got banned from the last school because I expressed the way I felt to the secretary. Meanwhile, I did, I came out, I called her B, right? I'll be honest. But I was not, I seen the teacher the next day, after he sat in my seventh grader's classroom, sixth grade at the time, said he was effing tired of his effing job and these effing kids. He didn't get banned. He didn't get suspended. I'm sure there wasn't no investigation, but I got banned. Because every time I walked inside that school, there was a problem. I came every single day with a different attitude. Hi, how are you? Those who know me know how I am. And I still, every single time I get hung up on, I get disrespected by the secretary. Nothing was ever done. Now my kids go to Global. They're in Global School. I know you guys all seen the news and see the crazy stuff going on. And like the lady said, right, with all the crazy stuff going on in, just in the world. My six-year-old, I would like someone to explain to me, why is it my six-year-old walked out the school? Not only one time, the teacher said he barely knows my child. The teacher said she barely knows my child. She's hardly ever there. I was told to be given 24 hours. My children have not been in school since Thursday. That's not the best part of all. I was told they could call DCF on me, on me. Meanwhile, I can't call the Hartford Police. I work for them. I can't call them to support me because it's a process. But you guys will call them on me if my children were outside alone. Fast, I'll be in jail. Without no hesitation. I want something done. I want my kids in the best school. I could, I could have went to the news. I could have. I could get a lawyer, I could sue you guys. I could really sue you guys. Hartford Public Schools would be Catherine's Public Schools. I promise you that. But I don't. All I want is the best education for my children. I have faith. I'm a Hartford resident myself, born and raised in Hartford. I went to the POW program as a child. I went to Yo Hartford, I went to OPP, I did all these programs. I did so many different trainings. I did so much things. The only thing I want to do today is to support my children. Because I do not want a phone call saying my children are in jail. I do not want a phone call, you know, the only way we can change it? Is by giving them the best education. Not when they're 20. Not by trying to talk to them when they, now. Matters now. My children have not been in school since Thursday. They are not learning anything because I do not trust you guys with my children. I don't trust my parents with my kids. My kids, I have a 12, a 13-year-old child, just turned 13, has never ever stood the night in someone's house. So I can, I can only tell you the other, the other two is the same thing. But I have to give you guys my children. I have to. You guys say that. Now what? You guys are going to send someone to talk to me? No. I don't want no one. Because I'm not sending, their father's not here, their grandparents are not here, not their aunt, it's me. I want you guys. I haven't gotten out one phone call saying I'm sorry. Not one. Mr. Oliver was the only one. But it wasn't his responsibility. It was the schools. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment.
Thank you so much for that. So we are going to move into reports. And the first report is a report of the Chair. I was actually going to read expert of a letter, a concern letter that the board received, but I'll just speak to it. The board received a letter from concerned parents from the bachelor school community in respect to the school, the school closure in regards to the policy. We have responded to that letter and I just want to just say publicly that the board, the Hartford Public Schools have been struggling to deliver quality education for a long time. And we have had a lot of different interruptions in our system. This Board of Education is keenly aware of the struggles that we have in our system. We are very concerned about the wealth of our children. We're very concerned about the quality of their education. And we are dedicated to making sure that we do our part to provide a strong system that is responsive to students' needs and that responsive to parents. This is not, our decisions were not based on any political, personal malice. It was not done through any political motivation. This is more cause and effect. We have a lot of different issues and a lot of different things impacting our system. And what we would like to do is create a system that has strong operational, strong operational support that would allow principals to do their job, but support the, that sacred trinity that we feel is important, which is parent, student, and teacher. And we chose to close 10% of our schools so that we can generate revenue, excuse me, resources to provide to other schools so that we can try to achieve that. The superintendent is working diligently behind the scenes to create strong operational systems that will support quality education. We will not apologize for that. We will not apologize for being indecisive, excuse me, for being decisive and taking responsibility for the positions that we hold. We are responsible for the school system. We are responsible for creating policy, creating governance, and introducing a budget. In respect to a comment, we voted on a needs-based budget last year. Our budget this year will probably be the same. We are not interested in micromanaging the superintendent. We are not interested in imposing our will on the superintendent. We are collaborating with the superintendent and what we want and what we will, are trying to do is model that behavior so that we can inspire collaboration throughout our system. So I just wanted to take the time to comment on that. I will allow, or I will let the Policy Committee talk about the policy structure and how they approached helping the board through the District Model of Excellence and recommending policies that would make sure that we are covered and making sure that we are doing our job in the most effective and most efficient way possible. So I just want to conclude my Chairman's report with that and I will move on to the Superintendent.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Stallings. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to start by thanking Principal Jose Colon for his leadership. Can you hear me well? For his leadership and for extending the school to us tonight. I have several announcements and reports. So I'm going to begin by reminding us that March is Board of Education Member Appreciation Month. So can we just acknowledge our board for a minute?
Yeah.
On behalf of Hartford Public Schools, I extend thanks to each one of our board members for their exceptional service, to all of our students, our families, and our staff, and to your devotion to the children of our city. Want to reference some updates in relation to our response to the Office of the Child Advocates Report. We are focusing on ensuring student safety. The Monitoring Advisory Group had its second meeting on March 8th. And just to remind us all, the MAG was a structure recommended in the action plan. And it's comprised of representatives from a variety of organizations and agencies that offer extensive expertise relative to the areas of concern that were raised in the report. This group serves as a critical friend, if you will, to Hartford Public Schools as we implement the plan. They review and give us critical feedback on our monitoring efforts. And of course, they are going to help us and support in our shift from a culture of compliance to the culture of change that we want in all of our schools. The MAG meeting on the 8th was facilitated in partnership, of course, with Hartford Public Schools, but also with our Independent Monitor. And the group discussed how we identify and define student safety and how it is that our students feel valued in our schools, which, you know, we heard a lot throughout our public comment today. In the next couple of weeks, we are going to receive a second report from the Independent Monitor and I will share with all of you, board, and will be reporting on that as well. On March 14th, we held a conversation with our community partners. The purpose was to provide, one, an update to our community partners on our District Model of Excellence and begin conversations around how to define our vision for every school becoming a community school. We had some themes that were identified from our partners. Our partners feel that, yes, they want to continue to engage and hear directly from me and certainly from my team around our implementation, but they also want it to be part of the work. And, you know, the next meeting that we have is actually going to be what we're calling a simulation. We're going to present one of our schools and design what a community school model would be for one of the schools that's receiving students as part of the District Model of Excellence. And, you know, all of our partners that were there were very receptive to participating in that. One other piece of feedback that our partners offered was around centralizing our partnerships. They feel that our partnerships, you know, are not aligned, are not centralized that, and they're not always aligned to our goals. With regard to implementation of the District Model of Excellence, I do want to give an update as to a memorandum of understanding, an agreement that was shared. And this was in collaboration with the Hartford Federation of Teachers Union Representatives and us, Hartford Public Schools. We engaged in efforts to support teachers from the schools that are closing or reconfiguring for next year. And this plan was, it included consideration from multiple stakeholders in our community. Consideration certainly from me around my commitment to making sure that we retain our teachers, right? We didn't want to lose teachers despite school closures and reconfigurations. Considerations around teachers, allowing teachers to move with the students to their new schools. And allowing for first preference outside of contractual stipulations. We gave consideration to students having the same interactions with their teachers, right? Even though they're going to be in a new, in a new school. We wanted to have that level of continuity for our students with those caring adults that they already have relationships and connections with. And we also wanted to respond to parents who were vocal about how important it was for our students to continue to have their current teachers even though schools are closing or reconfiguring. And lastly, we also wanted to provide a smoother transition for students that are going into their new, their new locations. Thus far, the action steps that have been taken, we surveyed teachers and identified their preference selections to the feeder schools. We have identified 99% of current vacancies and anticipated openings in those feeder schools that can be filled by teachers from a closing school. So 99% of those. We have communicated to the principals and to the teachers who have selected their preference to their school. And, you know, as you know, schools are now in the process of holding their open houses. Next steps is to finalize, right, throughout the budget process, the budgets and for teachers to communicate the acceptance of their preferences into the schools. And moving into the summer, allowing opportunities for our teachers to collaborate with one another in their new settings. I want to also highlight the walkout, the student walkouts that took place throughout our district on March 14th. As you know, many of our students, many of our schools participated. And just want to publicly acknowledge again, not only our Central Office leaders and And just want to publicly acknowledge again, not only our central office leadership, the principals that were part of that conversation, the students, Alexa, Alexa's here, the student leaders that were part of that conversation. And of course, acknowledge the parents and our community-based organizations that also supported our students and their leadership around this very important topic and call to action around school safety. I'd take a moment to acknowledge and bid farewell to Dr. Carbone. We certainly heard from Principal Sullivan as to the impact that Dr. Carbone has had on our principal's personal and professional leadership practice. You know, I don't know if Dr. Carbone is here, but, you know, she regularly, she regularly reminds me of the bad timing of her transition, given all the work that we're starting to do. And so I want to wish her the best and know that she's going to keep track of Hartford. She's moving on to Deputy Superintendency in Bristol. And soon thereafter, I believe Superintendent in Bristol. So we want to wish her well. A few recognitions. Kinsella Magnet was recently named a 2018 School of Excellence by the Magnus Schools of America. The Hartford Public Schools and Pathways Academy Technology and Design First Robotics Team, Team 181, advanced to the next round and take, they took home a Spirit Prize Award. For all of you that are into any of the robotics, and if you're not, please consider joining the students and actually many from throughout the state on April 6th through the 8th at the robotics competition at Hartford High. Pathways Academy of Technology and Design earned National Distinguished Recognition for their sixth year in a row. They were recently awarded the NAF Academy Foundation Distinguished Level. This distinction is given to a select few that have reached the model level of the NAF's annual assessment. And they exhibit strong fidelity of the educational design that prepares our students for success in college and careers. Reminder that we do have a community budget forum. We certainly, we unfortunately had to cancel last week because of the snow. We are scheduled to have one, we're scheduled to have the first one on Thursday. We are scared, not snow, we're scheduled to have the Community Budget Forum on Thursday. And that is at Journalism and Media Academy at 5:30. And we will have childcare available and translation services as well. The next part of my report is going to be a little lengthy, so I ask for a little patience, given that, given that March is Social Work Month. And social workers, right, are, you know, that they are leaders, they are advocates, and they are champions for our students. So I do have a proclamation, and I am going to read that. Whereas the school social work profession is dedicated to enhancing the well-being of others and meeting the basic needs of all people, especially the most vulnerable in our society. Whereas school social workers embody this year's Social Work Month theme, social workers are leaders, advocates, and champions. Whereas school social work, the school social work profession is expected to grow faster than average over the next seven years, with more than 649,000 people expected to be employed as social workers by 2024. Whereas social workers are present throughout our society, including government, schools, universities, social agencies, social service agencies, community, the military, healthcare, and mental health organizations. Whereas, social workers are the largest group of suppliers of mental health services in the United States. And the U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs is one of the largest employers of social workers, holding advanced degrees. Whereas, social workers are present in times of crisis, holding people over, helping people overcome issues such as death, grief, helping people in communities recover from natural disasters such as floods and hurricanes. Whereas, social workers have pushed for decades to ensure rights for all, including women, African-Americans, Latinos, people who are disabled, people who are LGBTQ, and various ethnic, cultural, and religious groups. Whereas, the social work profession has helped bring about some of the most profound positive changes in our society over the past century, including voting rights, improved workplace safety, minimum wage, and social safety net programs that help prevent poverty and hunger. Whereas, social workers continue to engage and bring together individuals, communities, agencies, and governments to help society to solve some of the most pressing issues of the day, including equity and education. Now, therefore, in recognition of the numerous contributions made by America's social workers, I, Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez, proclaim the month of March 2018 as National Social Work Month. And I call upon all citizens to join the National Association of Social Workers and Hartford Public Schools in celebration and support of our social workers. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Flores, for that. I appreciate that. Yeah, I got lost in your report and he had to help me out a little bit. So we're going to move on to Finance and Audit Committee. So I'm not going to have a report because the superintendent stated that our budget workshop was canceled and hopefully we'll have another one. We are working on Needs-Based. And before I do anything else, I would like to ask for a moment of silence. I did speak with Ms. Brody. And Ms. Brody, would you like to just introduce while I'm asking for the moment of silence? I appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone. As many of us may know or may not, longtime civil rights activist Ben Andrews passed away Monday. And in his honor for fighting for our civil rights, we would just like to hold a moment of silence. Thank you.
And that concludes Finance and Audit Report. Family Community Engagement.
Thank you, Mr. Stallings. The Family and Community Engagement Committee met on Thursday. We continued our review of Policies 1210 Parent Organizations and Policy 1211 SGC. And we engaged in quite a bit of discussion. We've heard many times complaints from parents that school administration is not always very receptive of parent organizations and even of SGCs. So we spoke about the need to include the support for parent organizations and SGCs in principals' job descriptions, in their evaluation, and as part of the onboarding process for new principals. And we were assured by Dr. Vasquez Matos that this is in the works already. We added some language about conflict of interest to the SGC policies. We've also heard some comments about people signing things when they actually had conflicts of interest, and we want to make sure that that does not happen. There was discussion around the definitions of teachers for purposes of SGCs. Some people felt strongly that only classroom teachers should be included. And our understanding is that anyone who is certified can be part of it. So we are doing research into the statutory and regulatory definitions of these terms. We had some discussion on the issue that Ms. Antana raised earlier, grandparents in the schools. It is our belief that in our families, and we know that our city is primarily a city of people of color, and this board is reflective of that. And in our families, in our communities, the nuclear family is not mom and dad and the kids. It usually includes grandma and grandpa and often aunts and uncles. And we need to give some thought to that when we consider the definition of parents for parent involvement. Because we know that many grandparents, as Ms. Antana mentioned, are the ones who are the primary caregivers for the children. And that's not something new. I was in school over 60 years ago. And that was the way it was at my home also. The second part of the meeting was dedicated to a presentation from Sandra Ward, who is the Director of Community Partnerships. And she prepared an excellent report on the assessment of school-based partnerships, services, and supports. As the superintendent mentioned earlier, it is our mission that eventually all schools will be community schools. And in preparation for that, she asked Ms. Ward to conduct a review of all the services that are offered at our schools. We have some schools, we know are called community schools. We have family resource centers in other schools. We have centers for learning. There's a wide range of programs at our, all our many schools. And we needed to get an inventory of what it is that we're doing at the schools. And I think going forward, we also have to come up with some standardized terms for the services that we offer. Because I believe many groups are offering similar services and calling them by different titles. But this is a start for that process of putting together a system whereby we have in every school a lead partner who delivers services and coordinates services by other partners, who helps with resource development. So this is a very important document. I recommend to all my colleagues on the board to study it. And I would recommend that some point we have a workshop on community partnerships. Ms. Ward also presented some recommendations in her report as to things we need to do going forward, including transition planning for the various partners, developing the school model as we go into opening up more middle schools, enhancing opportunities for senior high schools, developing systems to track our volunteers, and also the memorandum of understanding. So these are all things that we'll be looking at and working on going forward. I thank Ms. Ward for this report, which was excellent work. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Actually, it was good work. Next, we have Policy Committee.
Thanks. So Ms. Taylor is, was unable to be here today. She's the Policy Chair, but I'm the, one of the other two board members who serves on the committee with her along with Ms. Clark. So, and we, and we actually did not have a Policy Committee meeting this term because of, it was canceled because of the snow. But we, I, we thought it would be helpful to just, I wanted to just kind of summarize Ms. Taylor's policy report from the last meeting again so that, because it was pretty important and it has to do, as Mr. Stallings alluded to, in his report, with some of the lingering questions around the school closing and consolidation policy. Ms. Taylor spoke very, in a very illuminating way about that at the last board meeting. So I'm just going to summarize some of the salient points of that report that she made, just to reiterate. So, she spoke to the, sorry, so she spoke to the process that we as a board engaged in, in creating a comprehensive policy that covered closure, consolidation, relocation, colocation, and to not have conflicting policies. She explained that we were in a new landscape and looking for rules to govern the process around the District Model for Excellence. Our committee, the Policy Committee, met with many people and looked at plans across many cities, from District of Columbia, Los Angeles, similar Connecticut school districts. Outside community members sat at the table. Dr. Colon Rebus brought his expertise. Community partners gave input. And as Ms. Taylor explained, pretty much anybody that asked Ms. Taylor met with, and I can attest, she was out there talking to everybody as we went through this process. And then at the, so at the Wednesday, July 19th, 2017, Board Retreat, the entire board was there. And everyone who was there, and as I said, the entire board attended at the time, the entire board at the time attended, and everyone had the opportunity to engage and give input as we were going into, as a district, into the District Model for Excellence process, as everyone recalls that timeline. So at that meeting on July 19th, 2017, at that retreat, that's where we chose to stick with the current policy and not draft revisions to the school closure policy, since we felt it was unfair to create a process alongside something that was already happening, sort of like creating rules for a game while you're playing it. And Ms. Taylor explained that we had wanted to make sure the process was fair to the community, that there were enough safeguards and criteria to look at to approach this work with a fresh perspective, especially coming on the heels of Equity 2020, and not create something haphazardly. Those are all reasons for deciding to stick with our current school closing policy to guide the work of the District Model for Excellence. So, and the district also crosswalked the District Model for Excellence with Policy 3600, the current school closing policy. And Ms. Taylor explained that she's confident and proud of the work that was done. We went above and beyond the threshold for engagement that is required of that policy. And that this is not, was not something that we approached carelessly. We understand that schools are like homes for families. So that was, that was just what she, you know, spoke to at the last meeting. And I wanted to make sure we reiterated that about Policy 3600 and that we were very much aware of and crosswalking and designing the District Model for Excellence process around that policy. And we should all be able to feel proud of that. So that's it for Policy.
Thank you so much, Ms. Glenn, Ms. Denver. And next, we're going to have a report from Teaching and Learning Committee. Oh, did I? Oh, forgive me. You know what, I, you're right. I crossed it already. Forgive me. School Choice and Facilities Committee.
Me again. I spoke, so you just crossed it up. So yeah, so we, the School Choice and Facilities Committee, we met on March 12th. And we had, the first item on our agenda was the naming of Parkville Auditorium in honor of David V. Maholand. And I will speak to that more when we, we actually have that item on our agenda. But we, as a committee, passed a resolution to move that naming to the full board, which we're going to have here tonight. We also had, which is a standing agenda item that we always have, is a choice update. I'm going to, sorry, I'm going to get the actual numbers. We always, we always get the numbers as to our numbers of displaced families and displaced students that we have received into the district. And that number was, as of the meeting, we, I think it was 450, sorry, 450 students that have been enrolled due to being displaced by the hurricanes. And I had asked at the previous Choice and Facilities meeting for some data on how many of those, because at the time, the Resco Lottery deadline was quick approaching and it's closed now as of the end of February. But how many of those students actually had applied to the Resco Lottery of those displaced students? And we, as of the date of the meeting on March 12th, which I guess actually was actually, would have been as of the close of the lottery, although I'm not sure that this was the final official number, but it was 60 of those 450 displaced students that have come into the district. 60 of them applied to the Resco Lottery. We also received and heard some data about Hartford Choice. We always get an update on that as to how many students have currently done the application for this year. And at the previous meeting, I had requested some more historic data around some of our, many of our neighborhood schools that we received. It's actually, it's in our packet. It's kind of extensive, but some of the... It's actually, it's in our packet, it's kind of extensive, but some of the salient points of that was, around that data was, we had asked about how many current students at Batch Elder had actually been placed there through the Hartford Choice Lottery and as their number one choice in previous years. And so we, we had some data points around that. There was, for the past year, first-choice applicants that were placed at the school was 13 students, second-choice applicants was three students, and then there were six placed there that were not placed there at all through the lottery. And then some information, some data around how many of the students at the two schools that are slated for closure at the end of this year had done the Resco lottery. And I don't actually have the Simpson Waverly numbers, I think that that's probably in our packet, but the, it's in a data point in our packet, but I think the Batch Elder numbers were 204 out of the 422 students have applied to the Resco lottery for this year. There's some other data in our packets about, this is a pretty extensive area that we're delving into in general, and also with the lens, and I spoke about this at the last meeting, and I'll reframe it because it's going to be ongoing, just as we are, as a committee, developing a work plan to reexamine our choice policies and our transportation policies around the District Model for Excellence long-term picture, so at the end of these three years, and also in line with when our transportation contract will be coming up again, so that we are prepared to, you know, make some real recommendations that are database around like transportation and choice for aligning it with the District Model for Excellence. So there's a lot of data that we've already seen, we've asked for more, if anybody wants more detailed information, like I said, it's in our packet, you can ask me, it's a lot of spreadsheets. And then, as we've been discussing it at our last Choice and Facilities meeting, and again at this one, the Capital Improvement Plan, and the takeaway from that, which is really important to the District Model for Excellence, is that the Capital Improvement Plan is now aligned with our District Model for Excellence timeline as to the movement of students and the need for swing space. So that was really, a really hard work that the staff did and that the committee heard about at our meeting about aligning our Capital Improvement Plan, Long Range Facility Plan, with the District Model for Excellence. Including, which was the last item on our agenda, the plans to relocate the Board of Ed Office to Buckley at the end of our District Model for Excellence implementation, I think at the end of 2020, 2020, 2020, sorry. And so we also started a preliminary discussion around the education specs for that. The full education specs for the renovation of Buckley won't be coming anytime soon, but there's a need to make sure that we have an understanding of what the educate, the long-term educational specs roughly will be for Buckley, so that we can make sure that the Board of Ed space is not going to be, you know, first in terms of like, we're going to use, we're going to decide where, you know, the educational programs and the students' needs are first, and then, you know, put the Board of Ed office in extra space or whatever. So that's a discussion that is ongoing in our committee and also with the Office of School Construction, because that whole process is being expedited. The way we understand it is that it's not a priority project, so there's not the legislation needed in order to start that Buckley renovation, so that the Board of Ed will be able to move into there at the end of our lease, so we don't sign another lease. And then it's aligned with the District Model for Excellence timeline. And then lastly, another point that we, clarification that we heard at the committee was that, I know that at the last board meeting, there was, we approved that Weaver Ed specs, and that there was some discussion around alternates and needing to have a process whereby the Choice and Facilities Committee would communicate with the Building Committee around alternates for that project, because as you all recall, we approved educational specs that actually didn't have alternates, and then that were, this is what we want fully, a pool, and this is what we need to provide the education there that, you know, we believe the students deserve. And we were, we understood that even though we approved non-alternate Ed specs, that there might still be some alternate decisions made at the Building Committee level, but we heard that that is not the case anymore, that it's not being bid in alternate, that it's being bid in our full education specifications. And so that was good news. And so as of now, there's not the need to come up with a process for us to decide or help input the Building Committee's decisions around alternates, because there's not going to be any. And that concludes my report.
Excellent. Thank you. And just for some clarification, when we're talking about alternates, we were talking about the fields, the baseball field, tennis courts, those and so forth and so on. And those things will be included now. So Weaver Campus will be a fully functioning campus that's going to support learning, physical activity, athletics, and it's something that is long overdue, and we're proud of that. So thank you, Ms. Glanville, for staying on top of that. And it requires a lot of work. I also just wanted to acknowledge before I move on, that the 400, you said 58 students?
Forty.
400, 48, 450? That is a lot of students being displaced and coming to the system. And for the staff, I just want to say thank you for all that you're doing to support our children, because you guys get beat up a lot, especially at board meetings. I just want to take the time to say thank you, because you guys are sitting there quietly and diligently working. But thank you for all the support you're giving to our babies. And with that, I just want to move on to Teaching and Learning. Mr. Hernandez?
Thank you. Yeah, so I promise that this will not be brief, not because I don't want to be brief, but because we got a lot of work done and started a lot of good conversation. So we had three agenda items at our last meeting. We met on Thursday, March 15th. The most important thing on that agenda was, we acknowledged that it was my birthday the week of, no, I'm just joking. No, seriously, we had three good agenda items that we dived into. And the first thing I want to do, though, because the first agenda item that we had was around the concept of this African-American or Latino studies, or African-American and Latino history curriculum, right? Something I'm personally passionate about, and I'll explain why in a minute. But part of that is, you know, that's just, that's just a place for us to begin. The first thing I want to do is acknowledge, turns out, March is very popular, maybe because I was born in the month of March, but maybe at the same time, March is also Women's History Month, right? And considering what I would like our district to do with this idea of an African-American and Latino studies or history curriculum, there also needs to be an emphasis on the work that women have done, not only in our country, but around the world as well. So first, I'd just like to acknowledge the amazing women that are in the room right now, beginning with, you know, first of all, our very own student rep, all the way down to our superintendent, all the way to our board members, all the way to you all, Ms. Santiago, who does not get enough credit, right? So just, I think personally that women run the world, so thank y'all. I really do appreciate that.
I agree.
And I definitely don't say that for points, because at the end of the day, I mean, you know, but, so that's the first thing, right? So we did dive in into this discussion around this idea of some sort of African-American and Latino studies within our district, right? What does that mean? Why? Why did I even want to have that discussion? I will admit, I am biased. I am a Puerto Rican man, right? And I loved learning about my culture, about learning to be Borigua, about learning to be, I was born on the island of Puerto Rico, but that didn't happen to me until I was in college, and because I wanted to take a class specifically around my history. I had awesome teachers growing up in Chicago, I did. And I actually had teachers who were teaching us the work of Howard Zinn, right, and the People's History of the United, of People's History. We had people who were teaching us what it meant to be black people, what it meant to be African-American, what it meant to be gay, what it meant to be straight, right? So that's a benefit that I had, and a lot of folks don't have that. So I used this example of Tucson, Tucson, Arizona. A friend of mine, actually, who I've, who have brought, who I've met with multiple times and brought to speak, created a curriculum in that district. His name is Curtis Acosta. And I don't know if anybody's aware of this, but it was in, it was in the media recently around Mexican-American Studies program, right, in the district, that's been in court battles for years, almost a decade. Eventually, a judge decided that it was discriminatory to not allow these classes to be taught. And at the end of the day, none of that matters. What matters is that students were succeeding. They were getting better grades because they were learning about themselves, about their history, about their culture. Students who were not Mexican were learning about Mexican studies, and they were enjoying it, right? That preached, they were preaching success, they were loving it. We had students literally barricading the door to supportive education meetings because they wanted those classes, right? So there's actually a really cool DVD around it, it's called Precious Knowledge. I have it, if anybody wants to borrow it, just come see me. But we also had, part of this discussion was, we had Ms. Christine Woods, Christine Woods, who is the Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction and Media Literacy. She gave an overview of what we currently do in the district around curriculum. And we do do a little bit of this, right? Any curriculum that is written or revised now has to meet four anchor standards, identity, diversity, justice, and action, right? And that's beautiful, that's a good thing. I support that wholeheartedly, I don't think it's enough. That's just me, that's not, I'm not speaking for the rest of the board. I think that we can go beyond that, right? So part of what happened in Arizona is they banned books like Critical Race Theory by Richard Delgado, right? Something that I literally could not stop reading when I was writing my thesis in my master's program. Pedagogy of the Oppressed by Freire, come on now, right? Like, those are the books that were being banned, that's what I want to be teaching here. And I'm not saying that it's not being done already, but I want to make sure that it's being taught here. I also want to make sure that our students are learning about, yeah, we know who Columbus was, and we know what he did, we know that he discovered America. But we also need to make sure that we appreciate the first people of this country, and acknowledge Native Americans, acknowledge that African-American folks were not brought here because they wanted to be brought here, right? Acknowledge that the Taino people of Puerto Rico, the Dominican Republic in Cuba a little bit as well, don't really, aren't really around anymore because of people like Christopher Columbus, right? That's what we need to be teaching our kids. So what am I trying to say? We need to be teaching, we teach history from a winner's perspective, and that's, we need to change that, change that a little bit. We need to be able to teach the good side of history and the bad side of history. We don't want to be like districts in, I won't name states, but there are districts right now, not here, who are teaching that slavery, comparing slavery to unpaid internships. That's not a joke, that is actual textbook, right? Teaching that the Trail of Tears, that the first people of this country left voluntarily, right? We know that that is not true, right? So what am I looking for? I'm looking to ensure that we, as a district, are teaching history from all sides, making sure that a district that is predominantly students of color understand that they are respected, acknowledged, loved, right, through their curriculum, not just physically, or at home, or in the classroom, but through their curriculum. Damn, I'm sorry, I got to hurry up. So the reason that, not the reason, but part of what I wanted to bring up is that there are places that are already doing this successfully, right? So I already mentioned Arizona. Bridgeport, our very own Bridgeport, has implemented a graduation requirement for high school students. They have the option of taking three classes, African-American studies, Caribbean or Latin American studies, or the Perspectives on Race, beginning with the class of 2022, so that would be the incoming class of 2018, right, for high school first years. And the curriculum work around that was done by teachers and principals, right? That's awesome. Philadelphia has been doing this since 2005, right? So there's some really good work being done around there. I really think that we can do a lot more. I really do think that we can offer curriculum like this. I really do believe that we have the talent within our faculty to offer these classes. I believe the world of our teachers, and I believe the world of our principals, and I know that if this is something that folks want to do, I will battle day in and day out, if it means, you know, going head-to-head with some of my own peers, that's okay, because that's what I'm supposed to do. But I feel like I would have a lot of support up here. So that's the first thing, right? With that, the second thing, and I promise I'm going to move on to the next agenda item after this, we, as a board, will be voting on graduation requirements for the class of, the class of 2023, soon. I don't know when, I don't know how soon, but I know sometime in the future. So I'm glad that we got this discussion started now, because I want to know which schools are interested in having these classes offered. I want to know how we can make this possible. I don't know if it means having a test run in the school, right? Part of the conversation that we had with Ms. Woods is that, right now, schools really still have autonomy with how they choose their own curriculum, right? So part of the problem, that I think is part of the problem, is that if a school's offering psychology, right, a school has the option of offering half a year of psychology versus a full year of psychology, right? And so even if they're offering a full year of psychology, what they're receiving at the end of the day can be different. So we're trying to, we're trying to, as a committee, we're going to try to see how we can bring that a little bit closer to home, so that our students are receiving an education that, I'm not saying it has to be exactly the same, but it needs to be, we need to understand that our students are receiving a similar education, doesn't really matter if they go to a magnet school, or a pub, or just a straight-up public school. And then finally, with that conversation, is that we also discussed, when we discuss curriculum, we think of curriculum usually on a three-to-five-year cycle, so it changes a lot, and we need to be able to move with the times. So part of what we're going to be talking about, right now, there is an approval process for teachers, if they want to teach a class, that they, that they have to go through, and it goes through Ms. Woods' office. So we will be presenting, we will be continuing that conversation. So that's the first agenda item, I only have two more, I promise I will be very quick. Second agenda item was the continuum of SPED service delivery. This is something that we've had on the agenda for the past two meetings. Unfortunately, we couldn't get to it at our, two months ago, but we did get to it this time. And we had June Sellers, who is our Executive Director of Student Support Services there, and who presented on the guidance being put in place, and said that this is a process, right, that this is not a single event. There is a beautiful flyer, and I have it up here, if anybody wants to see it. I don't know if I can show it yet, but I will, I will receive that permission eventually. It is very helpful. It is a draft, I heard, so I will shut up about that.
No, it's okay.
Oh, okay, cool.
It's in draft form.
So it's in draft form, so it can still be changed, but this is very helpful, and it's, it is, it's going to be, it's so helpful that anybody understands it, even me, because when I, I'm very visual, so this helped, but, you know, if you try to explain this to somebody who isn't aware of these things, it might take a while. So with that conversation, June has been here for six months, I think?
Going on six months.
Going on six months, an incredibly long six months at this point, probably. And I promise that we will continue having SPED on our agenda going forward, different topics, every meeting, if we need to extend some time to it, we will. But that was a very, very good conversation to have. And then we also had, finally, with SPED, we have this Communication Bill of Rights that I have here as well, if anybody wants to see it. I have a copy of it somewhere up here, here it is, if anybody wants to see it. Part of this is, our students need to understand the rights that they have, as individuals, just as human beings. So we do have that, that is available. Anything having to do with curriculum is online as well, on our website. If you don't know how to find it, because I had no idea how to find it initially, just come talk to me, I played around with it, it took me like two minutes. And then finally, the third item, and I felt so sorry for him, but Mr. Mario Carulo, who's the Director of Math, we gave him about 10 minutes to get through a 48-slide PowerPoint. And that's just because of how much, as you can see, we were talking, we had some really good discussion. And I promised him more time going forward sometime in the future. So with Mr. Carulo, he gave us a quick history and overview of the current curriculum that we have in the district around math. And if anybody wants to see that PowerPoint, we have it, I will share it freely. And then, so those are the three agenda items. We will make sure that everybody needs to know that we will be meeting on Tuesday, April 10th, 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m., in the Superintendent's Conference Room, on the eighth floor, at 960 Main. And then finally, as Principal Sullivan mentioned, and our wonderful Superintendent, thank you to Kate Carbone, who's leaving us. As y'all know, the Teaching and Learning Committee is new, right? We brought it back after a long time of it not being here, and it wouldn't have kicked off the way that off the way that it did without Kate's help. So I wanted to thank her, and I also want to welcome Ms. Avila, who will be taking over our, the responsibility of being the staff person responsible for my, for this committee. So thank you for everything you do. Looking forward to working with Ms. Avila and making sure, hopefully, that as a board, that we support her confirmation tonight, so that we can continue to work as we, as we look forward to the wonderful future that is Hartford Public Schools. So, thank you all.
Thank you. And just add a note, that was exciting, and I'm proud of that. And so the last report we have is from, I think, someone who's gonna be able to find that information on electives, and if not, she can certainly pose a question. Our student representative and future U.S. Senator, Ms. Marata.
Hello, everyone. On March 14th, students across the country walked out of school at 10:00 a.m. to raise awareness about gun violence and to commemorate the 17 victims lost in the tragedy at Stoneman-Douglas High School. It was an outstanding event that raised much attention across all social media outlets. Students around the country motivated each other to stand up against gun violence, to speak up, and say enough is enough. We marched and protested in a peaceful manner and showed legislators that we can come together and discuss issues in a positive way. We are no longer sitting in the background. We are the voices that are being heard around the world. At HMTC, we were grateful to have the governor, the mayor, and the superintendent at our sides, listening to our statements and supporting our cause. We received a live media coverage, which made headlines in multiple newspapers and on news stations such as The Hartford Current, Channel 3, Fox 61, The Washington Post, and NPR News. At the end of the very day, the U.S. House of Representatives, having heard our pleas and demands, passed a bill on school safety. It is called the Stop School Violence Act of 2018, which will give money to schools to help provide the training and safety precautions necessary to keep our schools safe. This is just the first step in achieving our goal of putting an end to school violence. Students throughout the United States plan to march on March 24th to rally against gun violence and demand change in the gun laws. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
You're welcome. I was expecting more, sorry. All right, so moving on to business agenda. Item number one, administrative appointments. The Hartford Board of Education approves the Superintendent's recommendation to appoint Yvette Avila to the position of Chief of Elementary and Middle Grades Education, effective April 1st, 2018. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. Just to give a little background, Ms. Avila is an established educator. She attended Boston University and Hunter College for her undergraduate degrees. She obtained a Master's in Administration and Education from Bank Street College and a Master's of Social Work from Fordham University. She has taught and led in a variety of grade levels, in college, in public, and private settings. She's provided counseling, provided professional development, implemented district initiatives. She came to Hartford eight months ago as Executive Director of Elementary and Middle Grades, supervising 14 principals, providing ongoing leadership development to support the leaders, our leaders, in becoming effective change agents and creating strong school communities. She's focusing on continuous improvement as a key priority. She's co-led the Administrative Learning, the Whole Student Framework Initiative, Middle School Academy for Principals and Central Office Staff, and also the Systemic Continuous Improvement Team. You know, I've shared her resume with you all. I will say that Ms. Avila is not able to be here with us today. She unfortunately was injured on her way to work earlier this week.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Has it been moved or seconded?
Second.
The item has been moved and seconded. All in favor? Oh, excuse me, take that back, forgive me. Is there any questions on the motion? Any debate? Hearing none? All in favor for the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? Oh, okay. I guess the Superintendent's gonna read to the record of statement from Ms. Avila.
Yes. Good evening, Board members and Dr. Torres Rodriguez. Unfortunately, due to my injury, I am unable to attend the board meeting tonight. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to continue my commitment to Hartford Public Schools as the Chief of Elementary and Middle Schools. As an educator for over 25 years, I have had varied experiences supporting urban school communities. Hartford is a unique place. There is so much passion, history, a lot of devotion, and a lot of perseverance. My colleagues are critical thinkers, innovators, and change agents who put students first. I will deepen their work by building on established milestones. I feel honored and thrilled to be part of a team that is committed to providing all students with high-quality education. I have dedicated my career to providing students with equitable learning environments to excel. It has been a dream to be part of a movement where that occurs district-wide, as we move forward with the designing of the models of excellence, of a district model of excellence. Our dream will come true. It is with great appreciation and enthusiasm that I thank you for this opportunity. Ms. Yvette Avila.
Wow. She called it a movement. Excellent. Okay, item number two, acceptance of funds. Hartford Foundation for Public Giving, $380,000. The Hartford Public Schools has requested and received a $380,000 planning grant to develop and implement a comprehensive office, family and community engagement partnership, excuse me, Hartford family and community partnership, which will operate in the context of a cohort district framework. And Madam Superintendent, would you?
Yes. Additional background. The vision for this work is to create a culture that maximizes the perspectives, the contributions, and the expertise of our family, our community partners, in ways that is going to advance academic and social and emotional student outcomes. Most of the work for the first year is to develop a newly reconfigured Office of Family and Community Partnerships. We heard again through the public comment and in Mr. Flores's report from the committee of a lot of opportunity for improving our work. One, around partnerships, certainly around our SGCs or PTOs, and making sure that there's an opportunity for all of those constituents to be partners in developing the work moving forward. We acknowledge that there's work that we also have to do internally, within all of our central office staff that support families and our community. So this funding will support the hiring of a cabinet-level staff person who will oversee all of the family and community partnership efforts in the district. Not only will this person serve as a strategist, having the leadership and oversight of this area of work, they have to also ensure that there's integration with other areas of our district and all of the other initiatives and major goals. This is system-levels organizational change work, and it requires, again, those culture shifts that we want to make in everything that we do. We are in the process of identifying what this person in this role will do. The first phase of the work that will be supported by the grant will be to engage in an analysis and an assessment of our family and community partnerships practices, staffing structure, and the policies in the district. The chief will also conduct his or her own assessment of family and community partnership functions in the district, interviews, focus groups, and documenting reviews. This will include an analysis of not only the functioning, but the effectiveness of SGCs, PTOs, our family resource aides, family support specialists in our schools, and getting us to a more universal and unified approach to that work. The funding will also support capacity building for senior leaders at the central office level around what it means to have family and community partnerships, and then also capacity and consulting for aligning the work of family and community engagement to all of the other goals that we have as part of a strategic plan.
So the Hartford Board of Education authorized the Superintendent to accept funds in the amount of $380,000 from the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving. Is there, is there a motion?
Still moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any debate? Any questions on the motion or the item? Hearing none? All in favor? Passed this?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? Congratulations on that. And that brings us to item number three, the resolution naming of the Parkville School Auditorium in honor of Mr. David B. Mahollen, School Choice and Facilities Committee. What I'm going to, I'm gonna pause for a second. Ms. Landville, would you like to speak to this?
Sure, I can. Yep, I can. So the Hartford Public Schools Policy 3505 requires that at least six months shall intervene between the date of the announcement and the date of the decision around the naming of a school, part or a school in honor of a person. So at the regular meeting held on May 16th, 2017, I, as the Chair of the School Choice and Facilities Committee, made the announcement on the request to name the school's auditorium after David B. Mahollen. So more than six months have passed. Mr. Mahollen has met and exceeded the requirements of Policy 3505, and the board has received numerous letters of support, as well as a petition from the Parkville community with over 130 signatures. We also heard today from his son in public comment, which is lovely. And hopefully, I know he left. I feel bad, but can somebody make sure to let him know about the results of our motion today? Oh, wonderful. Okay, wonderful. Mr. Mahollen started his teaching career in 1957 in Summers, Connecticut. He was appointed Vice Principal in Hartford in 1966, and later appointed Principal at the New Park Avenue School in Hartford. In the mid-1970s, Mr. Mahollen was a valued member of the Building Committee when the Parkville Community School was designed to replace the New Park Avenue School. Mr. Mahollen remained principal at Parkville until he retired in 1992. Not only was he a respected member of the Parkville community, but also involved in professional education organizations at the city, state, and national levels. For his outstanding accomplishments, Mr. Mahollen was presented numerous awards, including the Distinguished Alumni Award from Pittsburgh Massachusetts State College, a Congressional Record Tribute, and two Connecticut General Assembly official citations for excellence in public school education and community service. So as I explained in my report at the Facilities and Choice Committee, we made a motion to move this item to our whole board agenda, so that we can all speak on the motion to name the auditorium after Mr. Mahollen.
Is there a motion?
Still moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any debate or any questions on this motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? Thank you. Now, we're moving on to consent. Is there a motion? Well, take that back, there's only one item. Forgive me. Is there, I'm not gonna read the consent agenda. Forgive me. So everyone in the TV audience, we have consent. Normally, we do consent. We compile it all, and then we vote on one, one action. So basically, I'm just going to put it on the floor. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Still moved.
It's been moved and seconded.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of taking the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? Consent agenda passed. And now we have item C, which is executive session pending litigation. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Still moved.
It's been moved and seconded?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We would like to take City Attorney Julie Wilde and our Deputy Superintendent Alberto Montez, Vasquez Montez, forgive me. Vasquez Montez, I forget the Vasquez. Give me.
Dr. V.
Dr. V. And we stand in executive session.
Hello, I am your proud Superintendent, Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez. I am leading the crucial process of reimagining and restructuring our school district. I need you, all of you, to be significant partners in our process. We are doing this imperative work to deliver on our commitment to ensure improved student outcomes and equitable access to resources for each and every one of our beautiful and capable students. When we have completed this process together, we will hold in our hands a stronger, more equitable school district designed to serve all students well, a plan built by the entire community that will benefit the entire community. We at Hartford Public Schools are coordinating the process, but you, the community, families, students, teachers, and all of our stakeholders are the voices and the minds that must inform this work. By sharing your thoughts, you will help to co-create our district model. Our work together, which takes place over the coming months in community meetings with families, partners, and schools, will culminate in the presentation of recommendations for district models for excellence, different ways in which the district can be reimagined while ensuring the health and viability of our neighborhoods, and continuing to provide access to opportunities and services for our families and students. For news about meetings and ongoing updates on our process, please visit our district website at www.hartfordschools.org.
All right. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Still moved.
Still moved and all in favor?
Second.
Aye. All in favor of coming out of executive session?
Aye.
All opposed? We stand out of executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Still moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of adjourn the move? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?[1724.11]